Please take roll.
Harrington?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Pollock?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wesson?
Here.
Okay, on the agenda, on the consent agenda, number four liquor license renewals, sushi, sushi. That's being deleted off tonight's agenda, otherwise things stand as written. So motion to approve would be in order.
So moved?
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda. Anything on there you'd like to take out and talk about first? Not a motion to approve would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Time for public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to make comment on any item not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close that. Kevin has gone on vacation. Did he leave you anything especially?
No.
Okay, good. You're next.
Okay, two quick items for you. One is that next week we're interviewing firms regarding the comp plan. That's been a goal. Obviously that's been established by the city council. So Russ has put together a team for those interviews. I think we have two next week. Hope to have a recommendation to the council sometime in August to move that project forward. And then lastly, I think you all know, we've been working on the annexation on the eighty acres just east of the Maytag facility. This is basically an island that's within the city. That has been approved by the city development board, so that's good news. And we're currently in the thirty day waiting period, which expires in mid-August. So once that thirty day period's over, then that property will be officially annexed into the city. That's what I have this evening, mayor, unless there are any questions.
Any questions? Very good. Next is mayor's report. I'll just go ahead and make this plain and simple. I will not be running for reelection the next term. So, that's done. We can move on ahead in our business. Project Better Together, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventy. A resolution declaring that support for the Better Together twenty thirty campaign serves a public purpose and approval of support. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
That resolution passes five affirmative and none opposed. Item ten, twenty twenty-one A, bond sale. Would you like to say a few comments, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, it's so nice to be back again. Thank you for having me, mayor and council staff. So today, we sold the two thousand twenty-one A bonds, seven million two hundred and seventy thousand. And they were rated double A two, which is an affirmation of your current rating. The Moody's had to comment that you have a great growing tax base, strong population growth, a healthy financial profile. Some things that could lead to an upgrade are continued growth in the tax base and resident wealth and a reduction in your debt burden. And I think we sort of hear this often, that North Liberty's just not the size of a typical double A one. But there are only nine cities in the state that have a higher rating than the city of North Liberty. So it's still a very excellent outcome. We received a one point two-three percent today. I had estimated around one point seven for planning purposes, so well under that. And for context, last year, your bonds were a one thirty-six and were actually a little bit shorter than the ones that we did this year. It is a sixteen-year term with fifteen years being amortized. So we're skipping the next year and then amortizing for fifteen years after that. It's a little bit longer than what you normally do, but I sort of, I advise staff that with rates this low, it really gives you the flexibility when you're layering in debt in the future to keep your levy lower. We, also, I wanted to report on the fact that the road use tax got upgraded, and that's not relevant to this sale, but it is something that recently happened that was positive. It actually upgraded two notches, which I don't normally see happen. A two-step upgrade, but the coverage on that particular bond issue is just outstanding. And so it's actually equivalent to the city's rating. Typically, an enterprise bond is rated one notch lower than the city, but because you've got such great reserves and such great coverage, debt served coverage, they really couldn't justify leaving it in the A category at all. You have a bid tabulation in front of you, and you'll see that you got five bids. The lead bidder was Northland Securities, and they did have some assistance from Midwest One Bank. There were four other bidders as well. Typically, Robert W. Baird bids with twenty to thirty banks on a regular basis, but when I reached out to them to find out who was in their syndicate, they couldn't tell me that. But, so just know that in addition to these banks that are listed here, there is probably a very large syndicate in Baird that was also interested in bidding for your bonds. There weren't any other double A two issues in the state today, so I don't have a comparable for you, but the one twenty-three is for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Tiana? Very good. You have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventy-one. A resolution authorizing approving a loan agreement, providing for the sale and issuance of general obligation corporate purpose bonds. Series twenty twelve, twenty twenty-one A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any last questions, comments?
Mayor, I think this, this shows not just with leadership with Ryan and Tracy, but the entire leadership team within the city. And we talk every year when it comes budget time. Everybody has their wish list, but the leaders of our departments come together. They tackle the same issues as a unified front. They all work within the budget that we set, and this really shows that. So I want to thank all of the leadership within the city for bringing this, not just now, but in years past, because it's taken years to get to that point, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Tracy, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. You need anything else from me for signatures right now? Thank you, Tiana.
Thank you, Tiana.
Nice to see you again.
Drive safe.
Next item, Centennial Park Loop Road. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding the proposed plans, specifications, and estimate of cost. Anyone wish to be speaking on that? Anyone present, or not present, wishing to speak in regards to that? Receive any written comments or other media comments?
None.
If not, call the public hearing to close. You have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventy-two. A resolution finally approving and confirming plans, specifications, and estimate of cost for the Centennial Park Loop Road project. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next is a resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventy-three. A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for the Centennial Park Loop Drive Improvements Project, NARF Liberty. Did any, Ryan or Ryan, have any comment on that one as far as the bids and how they came in?
I just commented, we were very happy with the bids. As you can see, we've worked with All American Concrete before, and they have been a successful contractor in North Liberty, so we're recommending approval to All American.
Very good. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
That resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Number twelve, Cedar Springs Lighting Right Away Agreement. This will be a resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventy-four. A resolution approving a revocable license agreement allowing the installation of additional street lighting on Cedar Springs Drive, which is going to be like near their mailbox complex in that area, and I don't blame them on that one. So anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Wesson?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Item thirteen, T and R subdivision, part two, lot one. This will be a resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventy-five. A resolution approving the stormwater management facility maintenance agreement and easement between the city of NARF Liberty and RTST LLC. That establishes the terms and conditions under which stormwater management facilities will be maintained for lot one, T and R subdivision, part two, in the city of NARF Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
That resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. JT Properties rezoning. Russ, why don't you start some conversation on this first?
Sure. So this is a city-initiated zoning map amendment. This is a proactive approach, I will say. This is for the property located at Ranch on Two Fortyth. It's the old Suburban Landscape property. It's currently vacant. Is designated as commercial on the future land use map. Comprehensive plans are advisory in the state of Iowa, but certainly we can rely on them for our decision-making. Zoning ordinance talks about that the city council on its own petition, or a petition of a private owner can initiate rezonings. A couple of points. Staff agrees with the commercial land use designation. We don't anticipate that that's going to change with the new comprehensive plan update. It's located along a prominent location. I mean, this is a gateway into our city, and I don't think industrial development on a gateway is really what we're looking for in city development. And without a rezoning to commercial, this city council would be compelled to approve a development that was consistent with I-1 standards, because again, you can't fall back on the comp plan because it's advisory. I did speak with Mr. Jack Belonge with Suburban Landscape before initiating the process. Talked about why, why we wanted to do this. He understood the need. As a property owner, he stated verbally he'd like the I-1 zoning because it allows more flexibility. He did state that he's not actively selling the property, doesn't have a development proposal. I sent notices to JT Properties about the Planning Commission and City Council Public Hearings, said it both regular and certified. So I know that he knew about both hearings. We have not received any form of objection to the request. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Staff does well. And I'd just like to say, this, this isn't something that I intend to do a lot. I mean, we talked a lot about this, and it was an important property, so we're really going to think, think before doing something like this and presenting it to you, but we think this one is warranted to be rezoned to commercial.
Now's the time for a public hearing regarding the proposed rezoning. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to that rezoning request? Any communications from anyone?
No.
Thank you. Call the public hearing to close. You've heard Mr. Rosnick say that the recommendations about the P and Z passed, so we have the first consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. In ordinance amending chapter one sixty-seven, NARF Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property located at the southwest corner of nine sixty-five and two hundred and forty-first street, located in NARF Liberty, to those set forth in municipal code for the C two A highway commercial district. Anyone wish to establish that first consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Yes?
Mayor, just want to say, Russ, thanks for your, you said it already, proactive look and approach on this. So just thank you for your due diligence on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Please take a roll.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
First consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Item fifteen. This is the third consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twelve. In ordinance amending portions of chapters one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight, and one seventy of the city of NARF Liberty Code of Ordinances, defining permitted agricultural and livestock uses, removing confined animal feeding operations as a permitted use, creating regulations for an agricultural experience use, modifying signage and off-street parking, requirements in general, and modifying accessory uses for community food pantries. Anyone wish to establish the third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Wesson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
First consider, I'm sorry, third consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed, will be enacted upon signing. Next is the hate crime ordinance. We deferred actions on this until about thirty days had passed, so... Yeah, besides the two emails that I think we've all received, anybody had any communications from anybody else espousing one way or the other?
Aside from the group that initiated the conversation, I have not. Again, they were in favor and support of it, and would like to see it approved. That was all the feedback I received from them.
Thank you. Any other comments? From anyone regarding the out public?
Somebody sent one other email, but I thought, did not everybody get it? That she was, was in favor of it because, but she misunderstood that, that the city was going to pay people to file complaints.
Well, so I think there may have been a group email. I responded to an email that had some false information in there about paying for defense of those that were... So I tried to do my best and try to correctly educate that individual. I don't know if that got passed around that particular group or, or what may be the case, but I think that was the discussion that, oh, okay. And then that second email came back and said, oh, we were mistaken. Thank you for pointing that out, and so I think it was cleared up.
Good. Is anybody favoring any direction to go? Whether we go ahead and establish it, even though it's as narrow as what it is? Or do we want to do a resolution or establish a mission statement as far as addressing the items in this? I'm open. I don't know. Have a good feeling which way to go.
So I understand that people want to kind of send a message, which I think is okay, but I don't know that making a law that, which admittedly the people who are, that supported it said probably wouldn't get used, is the best way to do that. Laws that don't get used often get used in unusual ways that may or may not be what was intended, which is a concern that I have. I still have the concern of how you would operationalize that, and I'm not sure why they would be more helpful than just relying on state statute, other than we actually add trespass and harassment, which I think, you can just add that to the, to those two small problems and the, and stuff. I'm not sure it really accomplishes what our goal is, and I still have concerns about the conflict of, you know, people who may not be able to afford a defense, that the people who are charging you are also responsible for your defense, and that could lead to a significant conflict, because you know, well, not necessarily today, or if, you know, tomorrow, but in the future, it could be somebody's going to look at something and say, well, if I do this, and then they don't have any, you know, then they can't, they don't have a lawyer, then we're going to have to pay for this. Should I charge somebody with this and stuff? And I'm not sure that would be always equitably applied. So, that being said, I'm not sure exactly what we should do to try and get our point across. You know, a resolution is like, this is what we want to do as the city, and this is what, we do not tolerate this type of behavior. A law is applied after the person's committed the problem, so it doesn't stop the behavior. I would prefer that people treat each other with the respect that they all deserve, no matter what, and, and stick with that is my goal. Now, how we do that, I'm still not sure. The other thing I think we could do, is it sounds like there is some shortcomings, maybe possibly in the state law, that maybe we could work on advocating for to maybe strengthen the state law, so then it could be a little more uniformly applied. And now, when we looked it up, the use, it wasn't used very much in Iowa and stuff, and, but clearly, it's, that's not correct in preventing problems and stuff. It's just not used, and there must be a reason for that, which gives me a concern. So I, my suggestion would be, do we make some type of statement or policy at the city level in reaffirming that this is what we want to be, and that becomes part of what we do with everything? I'm not sure that the law would help as much, and I think the other thing we need to do is maybe advocate with the, at the League of Cities, to maybe strengthen the state law that may be a little more helpful, and it could be applied more uniformly across the state versus ad hoc, little here, we're going to do this, and no, we're not going to do this, and so...
Can I? Okay. Yeah. I appreciate that, and I agree with a number of those things that you pointed out, because, and it's not used widely across the state, and that does cause concern. And I think sometimes it's like working backwards, so sometimes the state is like, if there's more support from smaller municipalities saying that they support this, then maybe there's a reason that we should make stronger, make stronger laws behind it. It becomes tricky when we put, when we place a law there that's not used, and I think someone pointed out, like, how we put laws out about fireworks, and how do you actually enforce those, right? So people not saying it's right, but they still do it, because how do you actually like find someone for that? And when you look at hate crimes, making the decision and finding the evidence, and then knowing that, you know, a lot of it goes back to... then knowing that, you know, a lot of it goes back to how much it will cost a city, and a city our size, and when you look at larger cities that don't even have this ordinance in place, you wonder why. Obviously, they have a larger budget, they have more people to take on a case like that. I think for us, like, part of our goal is to address social justice issues, and this is one step closer. Do I think that we need to put this as a law? I would love to see that, but if we're gonna have a law, I will also want that to be used and used, and be used effectively or for to make a difference. I too would hope that people would genuinely care about their neighbors, and we wouldn't even have to address hate crimes at all. And I honestly wish that North Liberty was that way. However, we know that there may be times that there may be some issues that arise, and we may need to address it. In looking at the state laws, are there things in place that could possibly help us in that way? And could we have a resolution or something that will hold some kind of weight to show and let people know that we aren't going to tolerate that? Whether it's this council deciding on it or another council, the fact that we're having this conversation even now is because we know that there's a great possibility. And the way things continue to happen across the United States and so forth, like, you never can be ready, and I would rather us be proactive than reactive in any situation. And as much as I would love to see an ordinance go through, I personally think right now that we may be in a better position to have, like, a strong resolution set in place. And I know that, I brought the ordinance here as well, but in taking in consideration all the things that, you know, are played out, and the fact that it rarely gets used, I'm there too, like, I want something that has more teeth. I'm not sure a resolution has as much teeth as law, but we also don't want people to feel or think that any amount of money is, you know, worth not addressing the issue if it arises. And that's where the issue comes in, in this situation, because we want something that has a lot more teeth, and not just a, oh, we feel this way, but what are we gonna do with it? And so, I don't know. I wanna hear others' thoughts too, because I know this is, it goes beyond race, it goes way further than that, and it lands on so many things. And as a council, I think it's our responsibility to let our community know that we are paying attention to these things, and we care, and that we want to do whatever we can to make people feel safe and heard and seen in our community. And so, I just wanna hear what other people think and feel in this situation as well, because either way we go is also addressing the fact that we're having this conversation, and we know it's important. And if it's not during the ordinance right now, that we have something on the books to say that we're not tolerating this. I don't know.
I agree, Rakesh. I think we need to continue to build off of where we've come from last summer. And our listening posts, there was a lot that came out of those. I think we need to continue to do those. But we've learned a lot, we've enacted a lot at the city level, staff level, under leadership has done a number of things from what we learned from last summer. And we certainly don't wanna forget those conversations or those lessons that we've learned. I think it's important that we make a strong statement as council, whether that's a values statement, you know, an ordinance, or whatever, that we don't put up with, we don't condone, and we don't, we don't want that kind of hate mistrust in our community. And we'll do everything that we can to stamp it out, so.
I'll jump in. Appreciate what so far, three colleagues up here, obviously more to come, have said. I think as a community, I always view, you know, leadership as action. And I think, Brent, you stated it well, what started last spring, summer, and carried throughout, you can see it in action with the neighborhood ambassadors, and you can see the continuation of conversations, and you see it, you feel it, people are engaged at a different level than they were a year ago. And I think it is important that we, as a community, I mean, I'm staring at the words and the definition, hate crime here on the screen, that we do, so I think what I'm hearing so far and what we've discussed previously is, we need some sort of statement out there to say, we as North Liberty, this is what we believe, this is what we value, this is how we respect one another as human beings, regardless of your religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, disability, race, color, et cetera. We are North Liberty. And I think putting something, Mayor, I actually liked your term too, so I don't know if it is a resolution or a mission statement or something out there that we as North Liberty, this is what we believe, hoping that we wouldn't have to get to the point of, here's an ordinance, here are fines to that point. It might at some point in the future go to that, I don't know. But I'm up here, again, as a team, we have to decide this, but I'd rather have some sort of statement out there, resolution, and I really like your idea too, Brian, of can we work with other communities and advocate for more from a state perspective? What that is exactly, I don't know. And appreciated hearing all of your comments and continuing dialogue with it.
The benefit of going last is that I can cherry pick comments based on my preconceived thoughts as well. I'm gonna come about this the exact opposite way of where this started. I believe that the ordinance is the only way that I would like to go. Not only does it send a message, but it also actually puts something in place that people can feel safe, and they know that if something does happen, that it can be investigated. Fireworks are a great example. You don't call the police department if the city kindly asks you not to light off fireworks. But if you know there's a law against it, and you call the police department, there's a possibility, if they can see, and that something could happen. And I do know that that does occur. So, and it wouldn't have occurred if we had just asked people not to light off fireworks. Parenting is the same way. You tell the kid that you're gonna put him in timeout for 30 seconds or for an hour on something that they've done, or less than that, it's just a warning to them. But if you take away something, or they are, and worse, you know, they don't get to go do something that they've had their heart set on, or in the reference to the hate crime, if they actually have to go to jail, that's for something that they've done in their actions. I don't think there's any other messages that will be as effective as codifying this. And, Rakesh, you made an excellent point. When cities start to bring this together, this is how state laws actually kind of get enacted. We think we don't have a lot of say, and there are some things that the state doesn't allow us to do, but when we can make these little steps, these micro steps, it gets the attention of the state lawmakers. So I don't see any other way forward, other than writing an ordinance to codify this.
Well, I personally appreciate all of you guys taking this discussion and moving forward with it. And I know, like, having an ordinance or a resolution or a statement will definitely show, and I think you just confirmed the fact that sometimes when we're small and we don't think we have a voice, that we actually do. And perhaps us taking the initiative to have an ordinance in place may encourage other people to do it, just like Iowa City had an ordinance and no one else was doing it. They're probably what, the only one in Iowa that jumped and put an ordinance out there. So that does make sense, and it does confirm all of what we have been discussing since last year, and unfortunately, it had to start because of something major that caught the attention of the world in Minnesota. I just wanna make sure, whatever decision that we make, that we can stand on it and not question that decision, and know that we are showing our community and other communities that we do support our community and the people that live here, and a hate crime is not acceptable. Like, no one should ever feel unsafe, unwanted, attacked, or anything. And I think as a council, we have shown that we have cared, as a city, we have shown we have cared, and, yeah. But I think we have a big decision to make.
Yeah, and I like the discussion aspect of this, and too many times on topics like this, we all go around once and speak, and then just move on from a notion. You know, I kinda came at it pretty hard and pretty finite right there. Brian, I'm really glad that you went first, and your perspective. All of the questions that you have and the hesitations that you have in certain aspects are things that I feel the same as you do on those. I'm willing to, I'm willing to, I'm willing to move ahead with those uncertainties in place, if nothing else, to stand next to somebody that is experiencing a hate crime, and we can prove it. Because without that, we can't. Without this ordinance, we can't do anything to help that person. Whether we use it or not is yet to be seen, and we may not for a while, but I think it, I think it sends the strongest possible message. So, but again, I've spoken twice. I think, anything else that's come up, this is, as Rakesh said, this is a pretty important topic for us to be spending some time on.
So, I, usually, when your kids get in trouble, you don't want them to do something bad again. I don't, I much prefer them not to do it wrong in the first place. So, I would suggest that we have an action plan, because that's a management thing, which, you know, it's not me. So, one item, we should be advocating, probably at the League of Cities, to adjust the state law, because it seems like it may not quite have as much teeth as we would like. I think we need, at the city level, we need to make a statement that this is, we affirm the right of everybody to be who they are and what they wanna be, and we all need to be, get along with, what's that, get along well, but treat everybody with respect. I think one of the other things we could do, as a kind of intermediate step, is just have, when Brent maybe talked to the chief, and just say, hey, this is what this would like, and just have the officers kind of start getting in their head, oh, so we can get some idea of what or not, you know, they wouldn't have to do anything different, just gonna say, hey, you know, we had a couple incidents this month, and they could have fit this bill, and then we can get some idea of where we're at. So, and not like some big reports or anything, but just get some idea of, you know, when people are, because people are gonna talk to people about things, and, you know, what's rising to that level? And then, I think that should get reported back. We don't usually get reports from the police department on a micro level and stuff, but maybe something like that, we could say, you know, last month, the chief said that we had four interactions with people, and they were, you know, we would fit this bill. Well, if you have four people that were conceivably, then I think you've really gotta think of something and stuff. And unfortunately, you know, we have to, you know, see if it fits within the whole greater scheme work of the law, and whether or not, you know, the state law would may be more applicable, but they would be able to do that anyway, be right. So, so if it was anything was like really egregious, that would be taken care of right then and there. And then, but the things that are kind of this intermediate, eh, not quite sure. If we knew what was going on, we'd be able to make a better decision. So usually, I'm not one to put things off and get more data. I'm usually, let's do something, then, and move along. But I think maybe it would be a good idea to get more data and see what we wanna do. We're still really limited in what an ordinance could do anyway, because it only applies to harassment and trespassing, I think. Yeah, and trespassing, I'm not exactly sure how you would operationalize that. Harassment, you'd be, I mean, and stuff, so, I mean, that would be the other one that you could figure out.
So would you see an ordinance being written a little bit differently, based on data that we find, or that we start bringing in from the police? How does that work out?
Well, I think if they don't have any cases that didn't get otherwise referred to the state system, and I'm not sure, then we've accomplished, would accomplish anything that we're trying to do. So I'd rather accomplish something and not leave something just stuck out in the middle of nowhere that could get misused later.
Yeah, and I think, I'm hoping that it never gets used. That's my, that's my goal as well, and I hope that that's what the data would turn over in there. I think I'm hoping that the message is just a little bit clear if it's written in an ordinance. I think it's the same message. Maybe it is, maybe it's, it's what's written, it's written down, it's something that, you know, you have to, you have to go look at or be subject to. But the consequences are very different. Whether it gets used or not, I don't think is as important as the message and how that is, how that is received. And that's where I come at with that.
Basically, after hearing these folks, just a couple items off now, I would like to hand something that's done by us that says, we are North Liberty. We believe in advocacy for all persons. You know, we wanna advocate for stronger state statutes on this, and also to empower our law enforcement, you know, to do the job that they need to do in such times. And put that out there, and then we wanna piggyback an ordinance or something on that. Now or in the future, we've at least got a footprint of what we would, what we believe we need to do, and then we can pass that to the folks.
I think our police department is probably doing what they can do right now, to the extent, and reporting back on what they, what they're lawfully able to do is probably not difficult. I love the idea of intermediate steps, and Brian, I think that's the, that's the big thing that I've learned in this discussion and taking that away, because we can do so much more advocating at the League of Cities. Like I said, I don't believe the, I don't believe there's any clearer, stronger message that we can send, though, than codifying this, with the hope that it never gets implemented or that it has to be used. And if it is, it's gonna be, you know, quite a process to go through. But the difference between a resolution or a vision statement that says those things versus a law that's in place, people are gonna look at those differently. They're gonna, they're gonna understand wholeheartedly what an ordinance has as a
My only thought was, the people, they're probably gonna be problematic, they're not gonna know there's a law.
But we'll at least have a law
Afterwards.
in place to catch them.
Right. I wanna prevent them.
Hand them on, but you still need to establish a public sense.
Yeah, we wanna prevent.
We need to address all persons' concerns at whatever level it needs to be, in that irregardless of race, gender, et cetera, et cetera. We're here. We're here to advocate for you, protect you, and do what is necessary to protect the general public. Now, if you wanna couple both pieces together at the same time...
Yeah, I got nothing, I got no problem with doing that. I don't think we can actually protect people or do anything if we just write it down on paper, though, or it's just part of a vision statement. And while it's narrow and the reasons that we may use it are short, it is something that we can actually do. We can't do anything with words. We can do, we can... We can do, we can only do things with laws. I like the idea of writing stuff down, too, broadcasting, we can do all of those things. It's not a, it's not a, just pick one.
Yeah, that's, that's the same. We can go on, you know, on a campaign, "We are North Liberty," da-da-da-da-da-da.
So, Ryan, would you, would that be something that we could probably ask the chief to kind of give us some idea of what the officers are seeing?
Yes.
And then, we move along with the other stuff, and then if we can kind of get some tangible stuff, then we need to move along, along an ordinance idea, that we can give them something that some people that need a timeout.
That's a nice one.
I kind of like the blend of, I've seen the whole conversation, but I like the footprint or start working on "We are North Liberty," take that out campaign, that we're proud of our city, we're proud of everyone who lives here, and get some additional, you know, on the front lines, what's happening from, from the police department. And maybe that's two months, a month, and then another couple meetings or some, I mean, I'm not trying to delay this. Chris, I'm looking at you in this case, but then maybe we have more information to say, okay, we need, we need an ordinance, and this is why. We've done our.
Yeah, I think it's a big deal.
Extra homework, or due diligence on this. I'm not saying we don't need this, but I think it would be in our best interest to have a little bit more information from, directly from the police department.
And again, I'll just ask, I don't know what information we will be able to benefit from, to enhance, or to rewrite, or to do anything different with this ordinance, because it's written so narrowly anyway, and there are only two acts that would trigger this ordinance. So, what information or evidence would we gain from our police department to enhance this, or how could we enhance this?
We don't know until we ask.
Yeah, and, and I think, Grant, you mentioned that there's not much data across the state at all, right? So, that's not necessarily something that's being tracked.
No, counselor, but we would have our own, our own internal records of charges that were brought and pled guilty. If someone is charged and pleads guilty to something, I never see it, right? It doesn't cross my desk. I only, I only prosecute people that say not guilty, right? So, I, the fact that I haven't prosecuted a harassment or trespass charge doesn't mean we haven't had 100 of them in however long, I don't know. And that's, that's data, that's, those metrics are kept by the PD, and I believe are fairly readily accessible, or can be, can be made to be. I think they might have to be cleaned up a little bit, but we can look into that.
Have we reached somewhat of a consensus on the movement?
This council will take action on this matter, not once or twice, but continually from here into the future, because of what we have learned, because of the folks who have spoken their stories, and for the listening that has occurred. So, this is not a delay. This is a discussion of a continuation of steps that this city is assuring will make this a safe place to live for everyone who comes here. So, I, I trust the body that we will, you know, we will do the right thing, and we will continue to do things. This isn't the last word on this, right? As we continue to build our city, continue to build from, from last summer, I have faith that we'll continue to, to get better and better, be better than we were last summer.
And I agree on two-thirds of that. I think we can, you know, we'll take action in the vision statement advocacy. I, again, though, I don't know what we're going to learn and how we're going to rewrite this ordinance, Grant, other than how it's sort of been proposed. I mean, we've got a very limited window of things that we can prosecute anyway under this category. Can this be enhanced? Can we spend some more time on this ordinance to make it stickier, better? I don't know, more enforceable? You pick an adjective. What can we do, and not to put you on the spot, but what are some possible things that we could do to enhance what's been written that we've seen in an ordinance?
Sure, so, I, and I don't want to cop out and just refer to my memo, but there, that contains the bulk of it, but the deal is that we're limited to simple misdemeanors. And so, conduct, criminal conduct that we want to, that we want to find actionable, whatever that is, and that has a, a, an infringement against a protected class of people as a motivator, right? Whether it's race, nationality, sex, et cetera, you know, any of those could be, you know, whatever that is, could be incorporated under, under that, under a hate crime umbrella, but they, it needs to be not a scheduled violation, it has to be a straight-up, simple misdemeanor. It's just, I apologize for getting into the technical weeds there, but there are, there are, there are, I'm sure more that we can, that we could, we could find, these are, these are the big and obvious, the most obvious ones that are available. So, if we want to find additional conduct that we want to prohibit, I can look into that and, and see what else is out there. This was provided to you just by way of an example for what's happening with our neighbor next door, right, in Iowa City. We are not required to do that. It is, it is a very well-written ordinance, I will say that, but can we find more? Sure, I can look for some and provide more, to the extent that's, that's helpful. The problem is, the more serious the conduct, then it immediately becomes a serious misdemeanor and not something that's, that's actionable by a city. So, we're limited to very low-level offenses, trespassing, harassment, stuff like that, that would be accompanied by this. Once you're, once you have criminal mischief, like breaking property, for example, that's going to be automatically, depending on the dollar amount, you're up to a serious misdemeanor, and you're, and it's out of our hands. So, I'll have to look into it and see what else we can find.
Doesn't sound to me like you're really going to be able to add too much more to this, or make this stickier.
I don't want to say I can't, but that's my, my gut feeling, counselor, is that, is that I've, is that this is about as good as I'm likely, or about as complete as I'm likely able to meaningfully make it. Doesn't mean I can't take a swing at it.
That's fine, yeah, it's fine. And I got no problem standing down on this, until which time you can, you know, fill in the gaps that may exist or may not exist with it. I think, I think that hits all three of these topics that we, you know, the ways that we can go about this. So, if it's data from our police department, along with what you've got, what you might be able to add to enhance this a little bit. I get the impression, though, that it's probably pretty darn close, the way that it's written right now. So, I don't know if we're going to glean too much more, and add too much more.
It, it doesn't sound like it's too much more out there to add to it.
It's, the trick is in finding something that has an intent component. When you're, you know, the vast bulk of our violations are malum prohibitum, they're just, it's speeding, for example, right? It's, you, we draw a bright line, you break the bright line, and that's the commission of the crime. If you have, if you have intent as a component, and that's, and that's really, putting that in there, then that's, that's the criteria that we would need to find, and one of those criteria, the intent has to be about the violation of a protected person's rights. So, that's, that's the window that I'll be looking for.
So, like I said, I'm fine with standing down on that for a period of time. How much time do you need?
I can have that ready by our next meeting.
Yeah, the thing is, I don't want this hanging over anybody as an election issue.
Yeah.
I like for it to be done.
Yep. ASAP. And I think we're, I think we're close to being able to do so.
No, I can provide a memo as soon as I have it ready for you, counsel.
Grant, so, you know, there's penalties in the, in the ordinance? Is that their penalty, or is that, does it have to mirror the state penalty?
The penalties that are in Iowa City ordinance are mirrored by the maximum allowed by the state. And so, we are allowed to, for a crime, administer a fine of up to, up to $855, I think it is, and end for, and up to 30 days in jail, and those both represent the maximum ceilings that we could, we could do.
But we don't have to include them?
No, no, we surely don't. We could have a hate crime ordinance that says you have done X, Y, and Z with this as a, as a component, and have a maximum monetary penalty that doesn't include jail time at all, and, and does not, that does not implicate anyone's right to counsel, the additional expenses from, from providing counsel or special defense would not arise, and it's just an expensive ticket that people would get. I suspect that people would still want to fight like crazy to get anything that has the words "hate crime" not to appear on their, on their record, right? And so, just, I think, Rakesha, you and I spoke about that at one point, that just the designation of it is in itself a pretty serious attainder. But what's, what I presented to you was what's out there, and if you want to modify it, or, that's, that's why I presented it to you, because what's out there is a break from what we're doing as far as requiring incarceration, that's not something we normally do, that implicates a new set of procedures and potential costs that reasonable people can disagree on how much those things would actually end up costing, and how often this thing would happen. So, the intention was to provide counsel with a menu of options, and to facilitate discussion, and to answer those questions when you have them.
So, here's a hypothetical question for you, then. So, you charge somebody with a hate crime, and they want to go to court.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you walk in, and they have their lawyer, and their lawyer says, "I plead guilty to simple harassment." Then what do we do?
Uh, I hate to, yeah, so hypothet, so, in that, in that hypothetical, I would, I would review the strengths and merits of the case. We routinely give people breaks for the, for the purpose of expediency. That's, that's what plea bargains are for, is to maintain the efficiency of the judicial system, and so, there's, it is an unusual week in court where I haven't offered at least some break on something to somebody. That's, so, I wouldn't say, unless we enacted some sort of policy, that, no, this is a particularly egregious, heinous thing, then we're, you know, we'll stick with it. I think I mentioned in our previous meeting that my, my number one requirement is that I do justice. So, a, a break for someone who, this is their first offense, and you can tell they really, they really screwed up, but they really didn't mean it, and they've made meaningful steps to atone, I'd be more inclined to give someone a break on that versus, versus this is someone who's a repeat offender, or frequent flyer, as they call them, and, or expresses no remorse, or doesn't, doesn't get why they, why this is something you don't do. It would really, it's, there's not, there's not a set metric that I, that I use, other than the totality of the various circumstances in each one. I appreciate that that's not a satisfying answer, but the fullest...
The way it is, anytime you prosecute something, it's up to the discretion of the prosecuting attorney.
So, if we have an ordinance, we will have to have some type of policy to give him some direction.
So, I'd like to see this, or at least to this point of the discussion, by next meeting. Grant, you could do your exploration of what else could potentially be out there. We could ask Chief Diane to do the same, from her knowledge with her officers, and we would continue to work on the two other components of how would we bring this to a higher level, maybe the vehicle is the League of Cities within the state, and start working on "We are North Liberty," discuss it, all that information, if that's feasible, by our next meeting, and then we could have, what direction do we want to go, knowing that we've had a little, we've had as much information as we can pull. I don't think there's any other data that would be missing at this.
I mean, the only thing we would then otherwise need to know, how we would operationalize something, you know, at the, you know, what, you know, what would trigger the police officers to think a certain way, and then, and then put that into, you know, and that would wind its way through the court, and then, you know, if Grant had to respond to it, you'd have to have just some policy for that.
Sounds like a winner. Old business. New business. Brian?
So, the inflatables, everybody looked like they had a good time. So, the bouncy house had 357 bouncers, so, and they liked it because it was cool on the inside, and I liked it because it was tall, and it was in the shade, so. Everybody seemed to have a good time, a lot of people were out, and the kids really weren't going around, and I think we wore some of the kids out, so.
I'm sure parents were very thrilled and happy.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Did you get any feedback yet from the joint meeting on the ARP discussion? That was the only new business thing I'd have. Ryan, did you guys have any conversation? I mean, we, as entities, just got pinged hard by, by one group for not having done anything, but at the same token, we really don't know what we can do yet. So, we're all still in a, we're all still in a, let's see what the rules are, sort of mode. So, that was the biggest takeaway from the joint meeting that you were...
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Did we hit an agenda item on there, or did it get taken off? The Project Better Together? That was my last question before we...
It was the first item.
We addressed it, yeah.
It was the $5,000.
Yep.
Very good. Excellent discussion, folks, so, appreciate it. See ya. Bird journal.
Thanks, Mayor.